I would love to watch that.
How are you?
All right.
I'm getting razors and something like that.
I want to be lead on that day.
I know.
No, no.
Good evening and welcome. Glad to have you all with us. I would like to call to order the September 21st, 2017 meeting of the Tarrant County College Board of Trustees. We have one public comment card, Jonathan Perez. Jonathan, if you'll come to this podium and this microphone, please. Tell us who you are and what you do.
Good evening. Good evening Chancellor and members of the board. Today I speak on behalf of the TCC chapter of the Texas Association of Chicano's in Higher Education. I currently serve as an advisor at the South Campus, but also I'm the current president of TCC Dacha here. Currently there are an estimated of 11.4 million undocumented immigrants in the United States, representing one out of four immigrants overall. Out of this 11.4 million undocumented immigrants, there are approximately 2.5 million undocumented youth, which every year 80,000 of them become the age of 18. Out of those 80,000 undocumented youth, 65,000 graduate high school each year. Five to 10% enroll into college and only 1 to 3% graduate from the college. According to the Texas Higher Education Corning Board, 2% of students enrolled in college are undocumented, with the most of them started off at the community college, 71.6%. From a 2015 article from the Texas Tribune and according to the Texas Higher Education Corning Board, TCC had the third highest enrollment of undocumented students in the state of Texas who pay in-state tuition. With DACA no longer in place, we need to put all our weight behind a permanent legislative solution to protect our Dreamers. We need every single member of Congress and Senator to support legislation that would allow Dreamers to work and live in the U.S. and demand a vote on the floor of the House and Senate. There are numerous bills that have been introduced in the House and the Senate to protect Dreamers, including the Bipartisan Dream Act and Republican-led RAC Act. Chancellor and members of the board, we urge you to use your influence as educators, elected officials, and leaders to call on Congress to protect our students and pass bipartisan legislation. Call your senators and congressional representatives. Set up a meeting with them or their staff. Bring Dreamer students with you to share their stories. I've heard numerous times from employees on there being little to no support for Dreamers on their respective campuses. Chancellor, no message or broad message sends a strong message to our community that Dreamers are not supported at TCC. If they are supported, it is only because of the specific employees that have reached out to them. The programs that have been offered have been led by outside organizations mainly using our facilities. In fact, there have been times that employees have tried to host or develop programming for Dreamers and requested data, not private information, but data only, and the response was, "We want to remind you that TCC does not want to be viewed by the community as a sanctuary campus." Employees have tried to host events through TCC and have received much pushback or no support, which speaks volumes to the climate for Dreamers. How can we meet the community where they are at, be a student-ready college, and function as one college to provide a consistent and successful student experience if we cannot even have a discussion on this topic to move forward? Thank you.
Thank you.
I explained to Jonathan the protocol for policies that we don't respond to.
The public speakers, and he assured me that when he walks out in a few minutes, it's not because he's mad at us, but he has two children at home he needs to contend to, so we called a truce on that. Jonathan, could I have a copy of your printed words, please? Thank you. And I think that those are the only cards I have, Mr. Gates. Okay. I would ask approval of the board minutes of August 17th, 2017. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections, additions? If not, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Trustee and committee reports, audit and finance. Mr. Greenhill?
Yes, my report's going to be rather lengthy, and if you want me to go ahead, I will. Some time ago, the board determined to dedicate the district's revenues derived from its mineral rights revenues to, to the extent possible, to support scholarships sponsored by the district. That's all of our mineral rights money should go to support our scholarships, and this is what my presentation is all about. My presentation, the presentation is a report from the Audit and Finance Committee regarding the investment policy relating to our investment of mineral rights funds. On August the 18th to 11, the board authorized the district to enter into a management agreement with the foundation. Pursuant to the management agreement, the foundation may act as the district's agent in managing and investing district funds that the district may determine to transfer to the foundation, which funds must be segregated and invested pursuant to an investment policy adopted by this Board of Trustees. And at the time it was passed, this management agreement was signed, it had to be invested pursuant to the Texas Public Funds Investment Act, which is called PFIA by a lot of people. On February the 12th to 12, this board adopted amendments to the district's investment policy, which among other things, established a separate scholarship fund to hold mineral rights revenues to support the district's scholarship programs and authorize the transfer of funds deposited into the scholarship fund to the foundation to be invested and managed by them as our agent and pursuant to the investment policy and management agreement. On September 24 to 15, the Board of Trustees adopted further amendments to the investment policy to clarify that the PFIA, the Public Funds Investment Act, was indeed the act that we had to follow in order to invest our funds. Well, that got people moving, and we went to the legislature last year. Good work by the foundation. Jill McIntosh and his group, the incoming chair of the foundation is also a lobbyist, and he helped, it was a great deal of work. I understand that Angela and the chancellor and a lot of folks in this room may have gone down to Austin to testify. It's a very stressful process. I've done it before in connection with my being a member of CCATT. The Texas Legislature amended the PFIA effective September the 1st to permit Texas community colleges to invest their funds derived from mineral revenues and investments under what is called the Uniform Prudent Management Institutional Funds Act, which is UMIFA. I think that's what it's called. This, the amendments gives the district and the foundation the opportunity to use the flexibility in the amended PFIA to enhance the income through investment of the district's revenues pursuant to the UMIFA. And I want to give a shout out to our legal staff, to our finance staff, Mark and your staff, and Stan, and Ms. Chang, and to our advisors, Ms. Neely, Karen Neely, and Linda, who is a lawyer, who is an expert in this area, and Ms. Patterson, Linda Patterson, who is an investment advisor who does nothing but to invest funds for colleges and other governmental institutions. She and Ms. Neely helped, helped put these, put the act, the original act together. But I want to make a shout out to those people for their hard work. So we got together with the, this group of people and the audit committee, I guess, two or three weeks ago, to discuss the new plan, to discuss a new plan, and we discussed it thoroughly. I think a lot of us were here, it was an open meeting, and we reached a consensus that the plan that was presented to us, to the committee, was one that we should adopt. And then we gave it to the foundation for it to look over. And the foundation did come back, I think, last week, and they had some very, very substantial material changes, which we thought should be reviewed by our experts, our advisors, our lawyer, Ms. Neely, and Ms. Patterson, our financial advisor, and we had a audit and finance committee meeting earlier this week to discuss the comments and whether or not we should go further with the comments or recommend to the, to the board that we keep what we have. And after a very long discussion, it was a consensus of the, of our audit and finance committee that we should keep what we have and not change it, not change it at all. And I think in our, in our view, after discussion with Ms. Neely, with, with Mark and his staff, and with Stan, and with Ms. Patterson, it is our view that our policy is in the best interests of the district, but does give us a great opportunity, and the foundation as our agent, to use this opportunity to enhance the income to fund our scholarships. Now, I can go into all of the objections that we had, but I'm not sure that this board is interested in that. Unless you otherwise object, I'm going to make a motion or I'm going to recommend that the policy that, that the committee has reviewed with the experts be adopted as presented is going to be presented to this board.
I'll accept that as a motion on behalf of the committee, which requires no second. Are there comments or questions, discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. In regards to the, the asset allocation, what is your anticipated rate of return? Do you have, have one?
No.
Okay. Because I would recommend, I'm not against this, but I think we need to take a look at this once the monies are invested and see what the rate of return is, and then take another look at it.
That's fine.
Okay.
Does anybody on the committee, would you like to say anything?
I'd just like to say I appreciate the work everyone put into this to make it a good, solid policy for us. And I think that we came up with a policy that is going to give us the best return. Is this not on?
No.
Give us the safest return and the least amount of risk. I think it's a good policy.
And protect our fiduciary obligations. That was another big concern, was to protect ultimately with the fiduciary. Now, Madam Chair, I have a written resolution that I'd like to be attached to the minutes, but I've been told I have to read it.
Please do.
Angela, I want to suspend the rules and just go say, "Look at it."
Is this instead of or in addition to the motion? That basically is a motion. Okay, go ahead. We'll do the formal.
Okay. Whereas the Board of Trustees adopted at its meeting held on August the 18th, 2011, a resolution approving the district's entering into a management agreement with the Tarrant County College Foundation. And whereas the management agreement provides, among other things, that the district may in its discretion from time to time transfer its funds to the foundation to be managed by the foundation, and that upon receipt of such funds, the foundation is required to administer, invest, maintain, and manage the funds that may be so transferred to it in a manner in which such funds are subject to separate identification or segregation from other foundation-managed funds and otherwise in accordance with written investment policy approved by this Board of Trustees in accordance with the Texas Public Funds Investments Act. Whereas the Board of Trustees at its meeting on February the 12th adopted a resolution approving amendments to the district's investment policy, which among other things, established within the investment policy a scholarship fund to be funded by the district's, to be funded by the district's mineral rights revenues to support scholarship programs sponsored by or supported by the district and authorized the transfer of the mineral rights revenues to the foundation to be invested and managed by the foundation pursuant to the management agreement and the investment policy as so amended. And whereas the Board of Trustees at its meeting held on September the 24th to 15 adopted a resolution approving the district's investment policy to clarify the applicability of the PFIA with respect to the investment of funds contained in the scholarship fund, and whereas the legislature amended the PFIA to permit Texas public college districts to invest funds received from certain mineral revenues and investments authorized under the Texas Trust Code, Texas Trust Code's Uniform Prudent Management Institutional Funds Act. And the Board of Trustees has determined that in order to use the flexibility of the amended PFIA to enhance income available through investment of the district's mineral revenues to fund scholarships, which its sponsors or supports, the investment policy be amended as attached, and we're going to attach the investment policy and the portfolio. To these resolutions are made a part hereof. Sorry about the "hereof," but that's a lawyer thing. And that the chancellor or vice chancellor of finance be authorized and directed to enter into an amendum, an addendum to the management agreement attached to these resolutions and made a part hereof. Therefore, be resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Tarrant County College District that the investment policy, including the mineral rights scholarship fund portfolio presented to the board as attached to these resolutions be adopted by this board, and that the chancellor or vice chancellor for finance is authorized and directed to enter into an addendum agreement with the district and the foundation as attached to these resolutions.
So moved. Right?
Mm-hmm.
Again, because the Trump Committee doesn't require a second, I would ask for additional comments. I think we interrupted Ms. Yellen. Do you want to say something?
I was just going to say that we went through this line by line. We discussed it in depth and got some very good feedback and very comfortable with our decision.
Others? All those in favor, aye?
Aha.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The lady in black, she wrote it right and fast enough.
Well, this reminds the markup.
All right. Lockheed Martin visit. Several of us, I was fortunate enough to accompany the faculty and the chancellor out to Lockheed Martin last week. And, you know, many of us have lived in Fort Worth for all of our lives, some of us a long time. And we know they're there, but haven't had the opportunity to visit. If you ever get that opportunity, I hope you'll take advantage of it. It's really interesting. Dr. Jovanini is pictured there with Jean Russell, VP of HR, and she's giving him a report card that's all A pluses for our partnership with them. And there's a close-up of it, Jean Wallace. And they are, were very appreciative of our work through our CIE folks and just in general, being our friends at TCC. So we were proud to be there. You want to comment on the time?
No, just to reiterate, Ms. Yellen, it's quite impressive you ever get to go there. I know this doesn't look like much, but this is their highest recognition, if you will, this report card written out. So it's a little, little card, and you say, "I got this little card here." It doesn't mean anything. To them, it's a big deal. And so we're very pleased to, you know, to receive it. And it's fascinating, the bill, we went through the build-out of all the F-35 and what's that, what that's like, and the technology that's used. And it really informs us a great deal as to programs and services. I, for one, was surprised that there's no welding at all in the F-35. Everything is a composite that snapped together, if you will. And they're going to be hiring about 1,800 people that need some composite background in order to work there over the next five years.
This is apparently like an incentive program to honor and recognize employees and other folks like us. So that, there's the motley crew that was out there. You'll see some familiar faces. They all behaved very well. And it was just an interesting morning, to say the least. Thank all of you for going. Who wants to report on the South Campus 50th anniversary celebration? Dr. Morrison?
Thank you. Each of us here today are keepers of a legacy. TCC is a post-1964 era institution. In case you are not tuned into history, that means we are a post-desegregation institution. For some too young to have encountered signs that read white only or colored over a water fountain or restroom, or who might have been asked to park across a busy highway in order to buy a hamburger from the local Dairy Queen, perhaps you have missed some of the specialness and uniqueness of Tarrant County College District. Thus these comments. Created in 1965, Judge Elcliffe Davis tells me that Tarrant County College District, then known as Tarrant County Junior College, is the only government entity in Tarrant County from its inception to be open and accessible to all people, from the governing board to the student body. Created 100 years post-slavery, we are 50 years post-desegregation. So it is worthy of note that many celebrations are forthcoming. With 1967 being the initial enrollment date for Tarrant County College taking place on the South Campus, we will all be celebrating. And each of us here is entrusted to protect and prosper the legacy. On Saturday, September the 9th, we had something of a soft opening as we held a celebratory book signing with Rebe Carey, who was on the original faculty of the South Campus as a history teacher. It was his 97th birthday, and he had a book signing for his 33rd book, all of which have been written since the age of 80. On Saturday, September the 30th, we will hold two celebrations. The first being the Sixth Annual Intergenerational Community Conversation, which convened with the question or with the statement before we pass the torch. This year's topic will be sharing intergenerational insight, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. The celebration will be held in the early college high school, in itself a phenomenal feature of the South Campus. Beginning at 10:00 a.m., we will have the kickoff for the general celebration, which will cover the entire campus. And I believe you have a very complete booklet, because we have had a year-long planning session under the leadership of Dr. Jordan and a very diverse team of people, including community persons that have worked on this to make it special. Because the nursing program began on South Campus, it too will celebrate 50 years of nursing this year. It is now entrusted to the Trinity River Campus, and on Saturday, October the 12th, there will be a celebration. The name you'll recognize is Lily Biggins, who is an honorary chair. But there's also a TCC alum, alum who's an honorary chair, who's over a nursing program in Irving. So we must all celebrate together, all of us. Because the legacy is ours, and it is our responsibility, each and every one of us. Some of us have a line item and get direct deposits, some of us don't. Nevertheless, we all have a part in ensuring that we carry on for the next 50 years. And on a sad note, Saturday, we will celebrate the funeral services for Mr. Abe Washington, who was the first African-American administrator at TCC South. who was the first African-American administrator at TCC South. He will be remembered as a dedicated educator, a master artist, and a dedicated community person. Because from the beginning, even to today, TCC only hires the best. Wouldn't you agree?
Yep.
So Dr. Jordan is here and would like to, I'd like for him to just say a word and introduce the video that's been prepared.
Good evening, Ms. Appleman, chancellor, members of the board. I don't think we have a video as such.
We don't.
Right. But each of you received electronically the navigation guide for the day. We'll start out with two pre-conferences, including a math teacher conference and the, yes, this one, as well as the intergenerational conversation. We have about 50 exhibitors, 15 vendors. We have entertainment by five different groups, including our jazz ensemble on campus. We have five food trucks, so come out and enjoy with us. It's going to be an awesome event, so look forward to seeing you there. And don't worry about parking, we'll take care of you.
So thank you, Dr. Jordan, and thank you to your committee, please, for all of the hard work and the many hours that they've put into this, trying to make it something that the entire community can support and enjoy and appreciate, because Tarrant County College is truly a jewel of the whole community. I cannot imagine what Tarrant County would be like if it were not for Tarrant County College. Thank you.
Thank you. On September 29th, which is next Friday, we will be celebrating the opening of a workforce center, which is part of the Workforce Solutions operations on our Northwest Campus. And this is a new kind, we've partnered with them on many occasions in many projects and programs and grants, training, but this, this is where they will actually be officeing on one of our campuses. So we invite you to join at nine o'clock in the morning, that grand opening. Ms. Hawkins, I know you're in the back of the room, is there anything more to add to You promised coffee and donuts, I'm sure.
There's always food. It's a TCC event. I know, we're going to have some instructors and some simulators and try to engage all of the attendees, just to let them know all the great things that we offer.
Tell them approximately the WACB building, which, oh, I know, we're going into the Conference Center.
Yes, it's in the Conference Center.
Michael S. Johnson Center, and most of it will be there because the hallway was too narrow. See how tight that is?
Right, and then we'll have tables set up, different campuses will have representation in different departments as well.
Great. Any questions from the board? We hope you can attend. Thank you.
So it's an all-campus event, even though it's centered on Northwest Campus, actually. Right. Am I right? I'm right? Yes.
Oh, yeah. All district event.
It's an all-district, yes.
Absolutely. Dr. G, you want to say something?
You know, you know, you've been around way too long when everything comes full circle. 30 years ago, the old PIC and JTPA and SEDA offices were in community college campuses. So we're coming full circle, and it's a good thing. Yes, it is a college event, but we hope this is just the first campus that has the ability to house Texas Workforce Commission Office.
And Workforce Solutions is a new name for the JTPA program, so we'll see how that goes and grow some more. Ms. Yala, you wanted to report on a couple of things?
Yes.
No? You changed your mind?
Changed.
Okay.
Changed.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Dr. Evans?
Yes, ma'am. Madam President, I want to thank Dr. Jordan and his staff for hosting me, giving me the opportunity to speak to the Men of Color Program. I appreciate them. We had a good group of young men who were out there, and to all of our presidents who helped to make that happen, I'm sure to appreciate you. Also, had the grand opportunity, privilege, to be shown around the Trinity River Campus with Dr. Madison, as well as the Northeast Campus with Dr. Goldman, and quite impressive. And these men and their staff, they do an outstanding job, and I think it's just a testament to the great work that we're attempting to do here at TCCD. So it was good. As a matter of fact, by being shown around these campuses by these men, I was able to get in all of my 10,000 steps that day. So they, they really helped me, and I thank them. But really, it was, it was a good time, and I appreciate the work that, that you all do, and look forward to visiting the other campuses as well.
Madam President.
Dr. Evans also goes by Pastor Evans, and he preached that night, and several of us were there, and we're taking some notes, and I told him I was never letting him out from behind this diocese to preach to y'all, because he would just consume the room. He was really great with those young men, and I think, there you go.
There you go.
It was an energy-filled room. Hopefully, we impacted a few lives, you impacted a few lives. Dr. Patrick, excuse me?
Oh, I was just going to add that I also had the privilege of touring the South Campus last week and wanting to express my appreciation for the thorough walking steps that I received as well, and so it was a great day and just so impressive, and it's really great to see how you've spiffed it up. It's the first campus, oldest campus, and you've made it look brand-new with paint and light, new lighting, and just really a great place for learning. Thank you.
It's a good way to see the results of some of the votes we take here.
Yep.
Anyone else? Okay. We will move on to item number five, the consent agenda, the consideration and approval of construction manager at risk delivery method for two space renovation projects, both at the Trinity River Campus West Fork Tower, one to accommodate the Texas Academy of Biomedical Sciences High School, and a pending academic partnership with that program. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Dr. Evans? Second, Mr. Heath? Any questions, comments? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have added a new item to our agenda. Dr. Giovanini is going to update us on a regular basis on events and happenings at the district.
Thank you, Ms. Appleman, and what I'd like to, in this inaugural one, just take an opportunity to give a recap of this past year, and looking forward to the future as it relates to our planning efforts, but really also make a, make a point as it relates to the call to action that we have as community colleges, not just this community college, but colleges nationwide, and so I want to reflect a little bit about that. But you've heard this before, the last year or so, spending time listening and learning and understanding the institution locally and statewide as well, and as a result of that formal informal opportunities, as well as the vision sessions we have, we did arrive at three goals and eight principles, in which to give some lens to do our work and then exactly what our work may be. I do want to touch on some highlights this past year, and there are plenty of them, but just to show a little bit of the breadth of, of the activity, I'm not going to read them to you, you can see them there, but we've had a number of, of successful events, activities, engagements, some things very unique, the partnership with the Fort Worth Transportation Authority to help pay, actually to pay the bus fare for our students, and a very unique partnership for the college and the Toyota T-10 program, and a lot of things that we do, but we're beginning to step up, if you will, and get into some arenas and avenues and engagement and partnership that we hadn't, hadn't perhaps in the past. And there's a number of things that are not up here, but we continue to embed ourselves in the community, particularly as it relates to our, our core mission in terms of providing access, but also being an economic driver of providing a workforce to the county overall. Some of the other things, a little bit more internal, was really related to some of the work we did with the JCC and the KELT, related to structuring the work around what we, what that group does there in a more inclusive and efficient manner. The Tuition Assistance Program is one in which the employees, I think, appreciate in that to provide them guidance and support for advancing their education. Then finally, the commitment continues, not just now, this past year, but to listen and learn and chat, so we'll continue along that path. These are some things that have been ongoing, and we achieved a lot while staying on course to, you know, towards trying to serve our mission and providing support for successful completion for students. So this, this is, these are, these are a number of initiatives that, both individually and in total and together collectively, help provide support to our students in support of their, in support of their efforts. As the year went on, I tried to continue to set a tone as it relates to the values that we have as an organization and how we'll work, and that particular, those particular pillars, if you will, inclusiveness that we want to, and I'll borrow from Dr. Blakenbaker, and that is inclusiveness, and that we'll invite you to the dance, engagement, we'll ask you what music you like, and then finally, respect, role and responsibility, we'll dance with you. And so we'll try to, try to continue to live by those values. But things are changing and changing fast, and it's really upon us as the community's college to ensure that we respond to this. This was 4.3% last month, and it's 4.2% this month. And I only draw a reference to this is it relates to, you know, where do we fit in terms of this factor out there that's in our society? This is really considered full employment, which is great, there's still a lot of people unemployed, but this is considered full employment. But what was really troubling, and really more of a call to action to us, is that even though there's a 4.2% unemployment rate, there's over 6 million jobs in this country, and many of them in this area here that are going unfilled simply because there aren't people there to fill them. And if you look as time goes on and what our call to action is going to be related to all this, it follows a trend, and the trend is more education, more training necessary for the jobs available, and you can read that, I don't have to read it to you, but that 6.2 million jobs now become 13 million jobs, and three-quarters of them requiring something more than beyond a high school education. This is us, folks, obviously, so, you know, our, our call in terms of what we do for the public good is only going to increase and get much louder. And if you happen to have a kindergartner, by the time that kindergartner graduates, that likely they're going to go into a job that doesn't even exist today, the words don't even exist today, as it relates to the workplace, and it's changing. And if we all live very, very long, and we're still in the workforce in 2050, likely we won't be doing the job we're doing today, because it's going to be, all the workplace is going to be a lot different as, as time goes. So there's definitely a trend here, but to make it locally, and what we value, in terms of the value that we have and bring to the local area, you know, most of our graduates stay right here. And so those jobs, all those jobs, those skilled jobs are necessary to fill. We do that, and in a large part, the, our students, our graduates stay right here to continue to contribute to the local economy. We're about a $1.7 billion economic engine commitment, or impact on the community here, $1.7 billion, just this institution alone. And, you know, talk about workforce and jobs and all that, but still, the bread and butter, a lot of what we do is if it wasn't for us, four-year institutions would have a hard time existing. How many of you in the, in the room have something more, have a bachelor's degree or larger or higher and have gone to a community college? I've gone to three community colleges, a transcript from three of them. And so, as you can see, I know some of you didn't raise your hand, because it's not 78%, but we play a huge, huge, huge role. And, you know, and I do have a doctorate, and I have three transcripts from a community college, so I'm one of those one in five, if you will. So our impact is large, not just a matter of creating or responding to a workforce, but really, we are the heart and soul of education, being right in the middle, if you will. And so, you know, these are, you know, quotes, obviously, but the new economy really speaks to something more than high school and less than associate, or less than associate, or something more than high school, but some post-secondary types of earnings. So 30 million jobs out there today that really call for the type of skill sets that we actually train and educate people for. This is an interesting thing here. Some of you have heard about free community college around the country, about half of the states in the, in the country have adopted free community college. And why'd they do that? And a lot of people say, well, you know, to help people go to school from an access standpoint as it relates to cost, and that, in part, that's true, but that's really not the answer. About 100 years ago, the debate in this country was should everyone go to high school? And that debate was answered, largely answered because it was said, as a society, we need better educated people, so everyone should go to high school. The question now being asked is, should everyone have something more than high school? So no longer is college perhaps looked at, or post-secondary education, looked at as a private good, meaning that, you know, it's good for the individual, it's really a public good, and what's good for society. So Tennessee was the first state in the nation to go with free community college tuition. And again, it wasn't about cost, because as you know, you know, those that are in most need have Pell Grant and such, so, you know, and I know there's need that's not met there, but really, what drove it was this, they had the guts in Tennessee to do the research and actually publish it, that said, if in, I think it was 2015, if you graduate from a Tennessee high school in 2015, and that's it, just a general high school degree, period, no Microsoft certification, no welding classes or anything that might give you a skill, that on average, you're going to earn $9,000 a year. And that was like an, oh-my-God moment, and, because the state of Tennessee said, how many $9,000 high school graduates can we afford? Because they're going to need all types of services. Now, I guarantee you, if we did the study in this state, let's say it's even double, well, that's fine, it's still only $18,000. And so this is very, so this was a call to action, a lot of other states followed. I'm not here pushing free community college tuition, I'm making the point that, that people are going to need education regardless, nothing's free, someone's going to pay for. So, but the point is, the need is so obvious now that one needs more than a high school diploma. And I talk a little about in the community about us being the answer. And if you look at all of these programs, and they eventually lead to, to jobs, many of them are transferred, it wasn't all that long ago that these particular fields, you might be able to get out of high school and go work in these fields. That's not, that wasn't unusual. Today, that's not the case. All of the skill sets necessary to function in these environments require something more. So when I talk about the answer, it's really about responding to the need that's out there. And, you know, you could, blue collar, white collar, there's a lot of term used now as the new collar, and that new collar is really something between the white and the blue, if you will, and the skill sets that are required to, to serve a lot of the jobs that are today. There's a research done of the 14 cities in the, in the DFW area, and Fort Worth ranked first in the middle-skill jobs, those new-collar jobs that we're talking of as it relates to those that are available out there. And, you know, they can be in any type of field as well. But as we look at, to continue to respond to the, to the community, we're trying more and more, and we are more and more, at the table as it relates to being an answer. You know, the chambers, the cities are doing economic development strategies, and we are foremost in mind now when that, when those discussions take place. And that is somewhat new, I understand, for the area here. So our response then has to be to, you know, to have those programs and services that are out, that will respond to the jobs that are rest, that are available. As we move forward, talking about some things that are on our radar, again, we continue to try to advance the transportation initiative, not just pay for our, our students to ride the bus, but also try to enhance the, the, you know, transportation routes and the modes of transportation, if you will, and to continue to align the work that we do with the ISDs. We talked about doing enrollment in early college high schools and where the opportunities are may there, be there. And if you look at eradicating developmental education, what does that mean? Well, I doubt we're not going to offer developmental education in the near future, that's going to continue, but really, the thought is this, is that we work with the ISDs much, much closer. We've already had some of these discussions as it relates to, there should be a high school graduate that comes out of high school that needs a developmental course. And so with that charge, just like the Fort Worth ISD has the early, the reading initiative, everyone's going to read by 30th grade, because if you can't read by 3rd grade, you can't learn, you can't read, you can't learn, taking this even further, and we have good response from, from some of the superintendents that we've talked to related to this. So we hope to engage in this activity where the goal really would be to work with the ISDs to, to ensure that high school students, graduates are ready for college as they, as they leave. So with that, that's a snapshot of where we've been for the year, kind of thoughts as it relates to what our position is and the response that we're being charged with, if you will, the charge that we have to respond to the community that we continue to serve. So, thank you, Mrs. Appleman.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board? Ms. Allen?
I'm going to elaborate a little bit on that transportation. You know, we talked about some time back about what, a day without a community college graduate, and anytime I go for any sort of services, and I'm talking spa services, too, there was a, a young lady that I was at the spa, and she told me that she was from New York City, she was looking to see if she could she was looking to see if she could change her career. So she Googled, went online to Google, and she said she was looking for some opportunity. She found that Tarrant County College offered transportation, so she decided to move here from New York, and because we offered transportation to the south campus, and that was able, she didn't own a car, and she's now working in the workforce, and she's doing very, very well. So just because of the fact that she found that we were able to meet one of her needs, which was very important to her, transportation, and it was, it was a good story. So I just wanted to share that.
Great, her first success story. Absolutely. Dr. Patrick, your light's on? No, no, just on. All right, thank you, Dr. Giovanini. We'll get into our, excuse me, our action items. Item number eight, City of Arlington Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, number six, presentation.
Good evening, Madam Chancellor, Mr. Chairman, Trustees. The City of Arlington Tax Reinvestment Zone, number six, Veridian Tiff, has, has come here to ask for an extension for, for four years to the year 2041. They had a slow start in 2017, but they have since done an incredible improvement, and they want to add some additional projects. As an incentive, the district will be participating at a 50% cap. This is a remarkable achievement in an area that had so many geographic challenges. The district recommends that the board participate in this, and we have a presentation by Mr. Bruce Payne, who's the Economic Development Manager, and he is also with Mr. Howard Potreos, who is also a developer in that area.
Madam President, my name is Bruce Payne, and I will tell you, I started my career after getting out of the military at a community college, and it was a great experience and was what I needed at the time. City of Arlington Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, number six, which contains the Veridian Development, is one that we're talking about tonight. You have the revised participation agreement in your, in your agenda packets. Essentially, the, the reasons for having to revise the agreement is there was a minor area expansion, if you will, of the TIRS, there was a parcel of land on the southwest boundary of the, of the district that needed to be included. The larger change was extending the term of the TIRS by five years, so that it would terminate, instead of terminating in 2036, it terminates in 2041. However, another component of your participation agreement that's true for all the taxing jurisdictions this time, which did not exist the first time around, is that all the jurisdictions have a cap. Your cap, as I understand, is set at about $34 million, plus or minus. The City of Arlington's cap is about $230 million, and the county, hospital, district combination is at about $91 million. By our calculations, the city will hit its cap before any of the other jurisdictions hit theirs, and the TIRS will end. This development, Veridian Development, would not have been possible without the public-private participation that all of the taxing jurisdictions provided for this project. The infrastructure needs for the project were enormous, just beyond what any single developer could have ever accomplished. It actually bankrupted four developers prior to the current one, and, and many of you know the history of that site. It's 2,400 acres under single ownership now. Before the property was assembled, it was valued at about $7 million. My understanding now, it's at about $440 million. In your participation agreement, it's actually a little different than 50% of your maintenance and operations side, it's of your total budget, it's 50% of your maintenance and operations. Your INS is untouched, you get the full benefit coming from the, from the development. The county has already acted on this, the city has already acted on this, and you all are the last taxing jurisdiction for us to request this change.
Motion to approve. Dr. Morrison, seconded by Mr. Heed. Questions, comments? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for being with us. Item number nine, consideration and approval of contract with Facility Solutions Group, Inc., for installation of electrical distribution system upgrade phase two on the northeast campus in the amount of $2,188,956.52. Mrs. Petty?
Yes, good evening. This is for phase two of work that we've done, you might recall, and this is in your summary attached in your information that we provided you. The project was initially approved by the board a year ago, July. However, due to extensive redesign and unforeseen conditions, the project was actually reduced the scope of it, and we came back to you in August and had a deductive change order. We've rescoped it and are coming back to you for the additional work that I know Dr. Gobin and his team are eager to get behind them. And we hope that you will approve this item so we can carry on.
Motion to approve?
So moved. Well, second.
Mr. Heed, seconded by Mr. Greenhill. Questions, comments? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Consideration and approval of contract with Insight Public Sector to consolidate authentication solutions in the amount of $289,974. Mr. Ragoo?
Yes, good evening. So this is for the effort put towards a single sign-on project. Single sign-on is to avoid numerous password resets, numerous logins for students to have, as well as faculty and staff. And on average, it accounts for 60% of the calls into our service desk. And at around $11 to $12 per call, that's, that's about a $39,000 monthly impact that we could, we could have with this project. So looking forward to it, and as I'm sure everyone in this room is, and our students too.
We've got them captive now. What do we need from them?
We got it.
Motion to approve. Mr. Heed.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Yala. All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? You've got it. Item number, all right.
Thank you.
There'll be other problems, you know there will be.
That's right.
But that one's gone, that's good. Consideration and approval of annual renewal of Evolution Colleague software in the amount of $630,594. Mr. Ragoo?
This is the renewal of our critical software system that HR finance, our student information system as well runs on. It's a critical component, it's the lifeblood from a technology perspective of our, of our institution.
Motion to approve. Mr. Heed, seconded, Dr. Evans. Any questions of Mr. Ragoo? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 12, consideration and approval of Elsevier Nursing Examination Preparation in the amount of $109,350,000.
This is offer, pardon me, this is offer for our nursing students to assist them in preparation for the NCLEX exam, which is a critical part of their nursing program to complete. It's a subscription, it's a renewal for the subscription to that software.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Greenhill, seconded by Mr. Heed. Any questions, comments, discussion? Dr. Evans?
Yes. How do they actually access these programs? I mean, do they do it online, or how do they?
Yes, yeah, it's done online.
And each student has their own login or such?
Yeah, this is for 150 students, the cohort who intends on completing in spring of 2019.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 13, consideration and approval of annual subscription renewal of Ex Libris Alma Promo Software in the amount of $177,454.81. Mr. Ragoo?
This is for, pardon me, this is for the renewal of our, all of our digital, digital library databases, our ebooks, anything from an electronic content perspective that lives and is housed and delivered through our libraries.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Greenhill, seconded, Mr. Heed. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 14, consideration and approval of annual renewal of McAfee Protection Software from SHI in the amount of $133,965.36.
This is also a renewal of a subscription to our antivirus endpoint protection, all servers, laptops, surface tablets, any, any type of endpoint device that we use for computing is covered under this subscription in order to protect it from viruses.
Motion to approve?
So, second.
Dr. Evans, seconded. Dr. Patrick? Any questions, comments? All those in favor, aye? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I say this every meeting, if you're new to the room and our process, please know that all of these items were thoroughly discussed and vetted, and the people who presented tonight were there to answer any questions that we might have. So this is not the first time we've seen these items or these amounts of money to spend. Dr. McLendon, monthly financial report.
Good evening. We are in the 12th month, this terminates our fiscal year, and so external audit is presently working to do the final completions and, and adjustments with our staff. The good news is that we terminated very well this year, we had more revenue than expenses. We plan to come back in the month of November to show you all the adjustments, so therefore, I'd like to move that we move directly to our investments. Okay? So if we look at our investments, if we look at the pool, we had a decrease of $16.2 million, that means we use that for our operations. If we look at our securities, we had a, just a small market adjustment, 0.1 mil or 107K. Our total portfolio had a beginning of 308, $300.8 million. We had the $16 million used that we mentioned above, and so it gives us an end in balance of 284.7. Our yield is 1.2, 1.24% compared with a treasury bill of 0.94. And if you want to look at our spread compared to the T-bill for 12 months, it's 0.3. And so our weighted average is 384 versus 365. Any questions?
Yes, Dr. Gobin has, I think, three introductions to make.
I do, thank you, Dr. Giovanini, Mrs. Appleman, and members of the board. We have had, in the last few months, we've had two retirements and one outmigration from our campus leadership team, so it is my pleasure, if y'all want to come on up here, I will introduce each in turn. Please help me welcome this evening Deborah Sykes West, our new Director of Community and Industry Education Services. Since joining Tarrant County College in 2013, Ms. Sykes West has served as District Community Outreach Coordinator and Coordinator of Special Projects, Community and Industry Education Services on the Northeast Campus. Deborah's expertise has allowed her to effectively implement the American Association of Community Colleges Plus 50 Initiative, establishing TCC as one of 100 colleges in the nation to provide direct access services and intentional support to the baby boomer generation of individuals 50 and older who are remaining in the workforce or returning to the workforce. Most recently, Deborah was acknowledged for her successful district-wide implementation of the American Association of Community Colleges Job Ready, Willing, and Able Workforce Development Initiative, which supported the middle skill training of unemployed and underemployed adults in Tarrant County. Previously, Deborah held administrative positions at the University of Illinois, Bishop College, UT Arlington, and was Executive Director of several nonprofit organizations that specialized in college access and completion for underserved socially, academically, and economically disadvantaged youth. Deborah earned her Bachelor of Science and Master of Education degrees from the University of Illinois Urbana, excuse me, Urbana-Champaign, and she also attended Parkland Community College in Champagne, Illinois. So Deborah is another community college success story and an absolutely wonderful person in addition to our leadership team. Please welcome Deborah Sykes West.
Thank you, Mrs. Appleman, Dr. Giovanini, and members of the Board of Trustees. I just want to say what a privilege it has been and it remains for me to serve our community as a member of the Tarrant County College District family, and I'm looking forward to the greater opportunities to contribute to advancing the mission and the legacy of excellence that Tarrant County College is known for. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Deborah. And I might add, last year was Deborah's first year chairing the Internal Employee Giving Campaign on our campus, where our campus basically doubled the amount of contributions. We had a significant donation that helped boost that, but Deborah did a great job with that as well. It's also my pleasure to welcome Dr. Linda Quinn, our Divisional Dean for Communications Arts and Entertainment. Dr. Quinn's academic areas of specialization include building effective learning communities to promote cultural understanding, as well as innovative, career-focused curriculum development, program analysis, and effective learning assessment methods. Linda focuses on maintaining academic rigor in the classroom while still meeting students where they are. Linda earned her PhD in Dance with an emphasis in humanities at Texas Woman's University. She has won the TCC Chancellor's Award for Exemplary Teaching and the North Texas Community College Consortium Outstanding Humanities Educator Award. Linda has more than 16 years of experience as a chair, coordinator, or director at the collegiate level, including terms as chair on both the Northwest and Northeast campuses, thank you, Elva, by the way, involving six different disciplines. She previously taught high school English, speech, drama, dance, and special education. Having begun her post-secondary education as a student on the Northeast Campus, she is excited to continue her service to Tarrant County College and this place that provided such a wonderful educational base for her life work. You probably all recognize Linda from helping coordinate several dance activities across the district and providing those as we do our kickoff and things at the beginning of the year. Please help me welcome Linda Quinn.
Mrs. Appleman, Chancellor Giovanini, Board of Trustees, thank you so much for the opportunity to serve as Dean of Communication Arts and Entertainment on Northeast Campus. As Dr. Gobin said, I began my college journey at Tarrant County Junior College, Northeast Campus, many years ago. It was a wonderful and memorable experience, a great start to the beginning of my, my college journey. So you can imagine that I'm very excited and grateful, 39 years later, to have the opportunity to serve the students, faculty, and staff as a dean on the Northeast Campus. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. One of the things you'll notice about Linda, she is one of the most positive human beings you'll ever meet, and she really adds a lot to our campus, so we're excited for her. It's also my pleasure to welcome our new Vice President for Student Development Services, Dr. Myra Olivares Ferretta. Myra has over 10 years of student services and higher education administration experience, most recently serving as the Executive Dean of Student and Enrollment Services at Eastfield College. She has served as a recruiter, student life coordinator, academic instructor, registrar, researcher, and executive administrator. Myra's direct supervisory work includes health services, student life, recruitment and outreach, trio upward bound and educational talent search, text prep, admissions, records, degree audit, dual credit, and early college high school programs. Additionally, she has held administrative roles for research projects locally through the University of North Texas Latino Family College Access Program and nationally through the Hispanic Association of Colleges and Universities. Since 2007, she's been an Advisory Board Member for the School of Health Professions at the Yvonne A. Yule Town View Magnet Center, and has served as President of that Board since 2012. Myra is an active member of the National Association of Student Personnel Administrators, and has also been active with the American Educational Research Association, Association for the Study of Higher Education, and American Association of Hispanics in Higher Education. Myra has several notable career recognitions, highlighting her contributions to campus climate through work focused on diversity and inclusion. She has been recognized for her commitment to supporting students' learning and success, their personal and professional growth, and also for championing and achieving important outcomes for students through interdisciplinary collaboration. You may recognize her from some of her work as a director on our Trinity our Trinity River Campus a few years back. In two thousand twelve, Myra was nominated and selected as an American Association of Hispanics in Higher Education Graduate Student Fellow. Most recently, she was nominated and selected to join the two thousand fifteen National Community College Hispanic Council Leadership Fellows Program, uh, an initiative designed to address the lack of Hispanic leaders in American community colleges. Dr. Olivares-Vareta holds Bachelor's Degrees in European Studies and in Spanish from the University of Oklahoma. There, she took part in a year-long study abroad in France where she focused on French language and culture. She also took part in a month-long trip through the university's Journey to China Program and studied Chinese language, culture, economics, and art. In two thousand seven, Myra completed her Master's Degree in Human Relations, also from the University of Oklahoma, and in two thousand thirteen, she earned her Doctor of Philosophy Degree in Higher Education from the University of North Texas. Please help me welcome Myra Olivares-Vareta.
Mrs. Appleman and Chancellor Giovinini, it is, I can't believe all of that, but yes, that had been. So, thank you so much, and I just want to also recognize, um, so many mentors that are in this room. Uh, TCC really does invest in us and as employees and as people. Um, so it is my absolute pleasure to be back at an institution where I know we're serving many students who wouldn't have an opportunity to go to edu, higher education otherwise. So, thank you for hiring fabulous folks that help to pour into people like me because that then enables me to do great work with our students on our campus. So, thank you so much. Happy to be here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Appleman. I just want to make mention of the breakfast and all the hard work, involvement, engagement that went into making that happen, the participation in it. We started out with a very cloudy, pouring-down rain day, and we left around noon with a very bright sunshine. So, those, hopefully that was symbolic of the year ahead. So, I want to thank you all that were involved and all that participated.
It was a good morning, and I understand the rest of the day went well, isn't it? All right. Um, any other business to come before the board? We'll go into executive session to deliberate real properties, section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-two, Texas Government Code, personnel matters, section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-four, Texas Government Code, and, uh, consultation with our attorney, section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-one. Um, we, our next, uh, governance meeting is October twelfth, and the next board meeting will be, um, Thursday, October nineteenth. So, thank you for joining us.
I'll, or we're supposed to, are we supposed, that's supposed to be seen.
I'd like to call the meeting to order at ten forty. And the board is recommending, and I would ask for a motion to approve a new contract for Dr. Eugene Giovinini. Excuse me, a total salary of three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Plus a bonus not to exceed fifty thousand dollars for the coming year. And we would like to recommend one year to be added to that contract. Additionally, we are approving a bonus for this year, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, of forty-five thousand dollars. Motion to approve by Dr. Morrison. Seconded by Dr. Evans. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.